Good morning. Today is Tuesday, May the 12th. And welcome to the Management and Internal Services Committee meeting for the month of May. I'm Connie Malier, the Chair of this committee. And calling this committee to order, I would like to go ahead and start us with a prayer. Good Lord, thank you for this beautiful day and thank you for the blessings we have, including the right to assemble and govern ourselves. And help us as we make decisions this morning that affect our neighbors and the citizens of the county. Some of these decisions are not easy, but please guide us to be sure our actions are based on truth and fairness. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, patient, all visible.
Thank you and welcome. I see that everybody's spread out the appropriate distance. We've got all the chairs at least six feet apart. Thank you for all being here. I believe we've packed in everybody that wanted to attend this morning. We have a quorum, and even they were spread out. We have a full quorum this morning. And I want to ask for approval for the minutes of the previous meeting.
Moved to accept. Second.
So moved. Is there any changes I do see on this agenda for this morning? We're going to skip the employee of the month?
Not at my knowledge.
Okay, so we will skip the employee of the month presentation and table that for another meeting. And nothing on the consent agenda? Let's move right into debate. Actually, before we do that, Mr. Johnson, will you give us a quick update on the COVID response for the county? Is there anything you could update everybody?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to do that. So the county has returned to operations, as you know, as of last Monday. So we've had a full week to make sure that we're doing everything according to the guidelines. It's been working very well. We've got most of our facilities back open. We were waiting actually to today for the governor's executive order to expire to open a few more facilities. So we'll be looking at those and we'll be notifying the commission about the ones that we're thinking about. I know specifically there were questions about the dog park and some of the other facilities like that. So we'll be looking at doing that very soon. The cases in Columbia County, you know, we're monitoring those. When we talk about flattening the curve, while there are over 170 cases total in Columbia County, we have somewhere around 40 active cases today. So they're falling off faster than we're adding cases back. We're adding one or two a day and we're dropping off four or five a day. And it just depends on the day. There could be a little spike. But for the most part, if you believe in statistics and you look at the graph, it's pretty obvious that we're on the best side of this barring any sort of resurgence of the virus. As far as our employees, everybody's back to work. We're doing things kind of our new normal and we're rocking along in Columbia County. I think we're ahead of several other counties.
Very good. Thank you. On the news, I'm hearing that we are sponsoring antibody tests. Is that for anybody and everybody? I'm getting a lot of calls and questions and emails from citizens wanting to know how they can participate.
Well, that was a partnership that we, actually Chairman Duncan was working with Augusta University. And he was championing the idea of the antibody testing, trying to see how many cases that maybe weren't caught. And we needed to be able to have a study that was statistically sound. So working with AU, they suggested that we have 1,000 employees or 1,000 people take this test. They want it to be somewhat confined, so they want to limit it to employees. But then they also thought that it would be a good idea to extend it to the school system, to the educators, to the teachers. So with that, we partnered with them to do that. That'll be an item that I'll bring back to you as far as the payment is concerned on that. But the partnership that we have in place is just to do a study to see where we land as far as who all has the antibodies or how many people have been exposed or infected that we didn't know about.
What's the timeframe on that? If you're bringing it back to us and then we have to go forward, when will people be able to start? The employees start to be able to participate?
I don't have an exact date.
Yeah, we're working on the logistics. Augusta University is.
It won't be three months from now. It'll be pretty soon.
I think it'll be sooner than three months, but it could be a month from now.
Very good, very good. One other COVID-related question this might be for Leanne, since a lot of the employees have not been with us. Will we still be able to have our audit with Serato Max Evans Committee? Have they been able to come in the offices and do their testing? Very good. So everything's on track. Very good. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to go off track there for a second and ask questions. On the debate agenda, as you have in front of you, we have some items, starting with county manager. Mr. Johnson, what do you have for us today?
Thank you, ma'am chair. First item for your consideration is the United Concordia Dental Product Renewal for Employees for Years 21 to 22. As always, our HR department has done a great job working with United Concordia. And we're able to renew this term of two years with 0% increase. And staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent. Second.
So moved.
Good work.
Next.
The next item you have is renewal of three of the temporary workers and payroll for temporary workers contract with express employment professionals. As you know, you approved, or the commission approved this in May of 2016. We had rights to be able to extend this contract. This is the third and final option to renew the one-year term that would end on June 30, 2021. And then we'll put this out for bid at that time. But staff recommends the approval of the third and final renewal of the existing temporary workers and payroll for temporary workers contract with express employment.
Moved to consent.
Second with a question.
Yes, sir.
When will that come back in? I mean, temporary employees, could that affect us?
Yeah, so we've had this, we do it in the past. So if it expires in June of 2021, we'll probably start that process in January of 2021, looking at that. And then we'll have some sort of transition period in place if the same company doesn't get it again. But we've transitioned several times with these types of contracts, done it with landscaping as well. So our procurement department does a really good job and the departments that work with these folks, HR, they do a good job of transitioning. I think we'll be okay.
We have a motion and second. So moved. Next.
Next item you have for your consideration is a policy revision. This is policy number 230.1. As you know, we constantly go over our policy and anytime we need to make a change, we bring that to you. This particular one has to do with the coronavirus response. As you all know, the federal government came out with a Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Emergency Family Medical Leave Expansion Act and the Emergency Paid Leave Act. So all of these are new things that would come onboard. We discussed whether or not it would be necessary to include these in our policy manual. But because we have employees that are currently using these, as the law requires, we thought it would be a good idea to do it. If we need to change it later and take it out, you know, it may not stay there forever. But we feel like it's the right thing to do at this point. So with that said, staff recommends the approval of the amended policy 230.1.
So will these be revised out when they lapse?
Well, that was the question, Mr. Chairman. We'll look at, right now it's just put into the policy.
Right.
But we review the policy so often. If this goes a year and we don't have any more coronavirus or anything like that, then we'll take it out. This does expire, so there's a sunset on the law, right?
And there needs to be a sunset on the policy as well.
There, probably so, yeah. I would think so.
I would make a motion to move that with having a sunset with...
In accordance with federal law.
Federal law. If that works, then we wouldn't have to go back and press it at that time. Because I think it expires in...
It does.
So you're saying we should just add that verbiage in there?
When it goes away with the federal...
Yeah, just whatever the timeline is.
...we'll take it away. Rather than...
Reinforce to do it because of federal. So my opinion is that, again, whenever it lapses, then we lapse.
Mr. Driver, is that the most appropriate way to put a date on it or to say to match with federal law?
Yep, because it could get extended and if it gets extended, then we don't.
Correct. Perfect.
And we're not doing that, so we don't want to put a date on it, so.
To match federal law.
You understand the motion?
So the motion is to accept, but to make sure that the verbiage includes to match.
Sunset with federal law.
You're right, sunset.
Correct. Second.
So moved.
Did you?
I was moved to consent.
Okay, thanks.
That is moved to consent. Is that everything from that section, Johnson?
We have a couple more items. Ms. Reese has a full item.
Reese?
Morning.
Morning. Making sure there were no obstacles in my path. So the first item I have for you is with the juvenile court, some independent contractor agreements that are up for renewal. These expire on June 30th and they're asking that they be renewed for another year. They are all remaining the same except for the agreement with Brenda Taylor. They have included a 5% increase for that contract, which is standard. They usually include that every year and those funds are budgeted. Staff recommends approval.
Moved to consent. Second.
So moved.
The next item is a supplemental agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is with our Section 5311 Rural Transportation Program. Under the CARES Act, funding has been appropriated to cover 100% of the county's operating and capital costs beginning January 20th of this year through June 30th of next year, 2021. Basically, what this means is it will fund 100% of the remaining of the current fiscal year from January 20th to June 30th and then the full contract for next year. It will include an increase of $191,832 in operating funds and $2,720 in capital funds for the current fiscal year and an additional $213,656 in operating funds and $5,252 in capital funds for next fiscal year, which is 100% of the contract for next year. So staff recommends acceptance of this agreement with authorization for the chairman to sign it once we do receive the agreement.
So the state has already approved the application?
Yes.
A motion?
Moved to accept. Moved to consent, sorry. Second.
Okay, so moved. Next.
The final item is the purchase of portable radios for our public transit department. This was actually part of the current fiscal year's grant award. They awarded $27,200 or they funded that much of it. The quote we received from Motorola is $37,070. So we do need an additional $9,870, which we now do have in the budget because of the previous item that just approved, fully fund these radios. And this gets us in compliance, and I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, but with the 800 megahertz system that we currently have, this will get transit in compliance with that.
Are they not in compliance now?
They currently have...
It's not compliance. They just, they can't talk to them. So it just gets, I don't think it's a compliance issue, but it allows us to, everybody to be able to...
Utilize that.
Right.
Moved to consent. Second.
So moved. Anything else, Ms. Reese?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. And so do we have any additional items to add? Information, okay. Legal matters, Mr. Driver? Thank you, sir. Staff reports.
First item we have, just for your information, is our personnel savings. You can see that personnel savings data is 968,571. This is significant because, as you know, the commission approved a new PTO incentive payout for the folks that worked during the coronavirus period. Those checks have already been distributed to the employees. And the total amount of that PTO payout was just a little over a million dollars, a million, $34,000. But 661,000 of that came from the general fund. So you can see that we were able to do this within budget. And by the way, this 968 does not include the $800,000 that the sheriff has saved as well. So really, we've saved $1.7 million in budgeted salary money. And we spent 661,000 out of the general fund. And again, the other funds absorbed the other PTO payouts. But just wanted to give you that information. I think it's tough to be working without the employees. It's been a challenging year as far as hiring people and you all know that. But this is one year that I'm very glad we had salary savings because we were able to do something really good for our employees that went above and beyond.
How many employees are we short? How many positions?
The sheriff, just the sheriff is short 40. And I believe we're probably in the same neighborhood. Marshall, probably 40 or 50 short.
Does beg the question, do we need them?
Yeah, well, the people that are doing the extra work would say, yes, we absolutely need them and they're dying. But we do have a system in place where we review every one of these. And if there's one that's been out there for a long time, that's exactly what we do, Mr. Chairman. We pull it back in and say, you know what, we've been a year or two without this position. Do we really need it? If the answer is no, then we bring that to you to do away with it, maybe merge two jobs or something like that.
That'd be a good exercise to go through as we get prepared for this next budget. And I know that you're taking a real conservative approach to the revenue just based on life as we see it in our economy. So it's a wise move to make sure that we're as conservative as we can and that may be eliminating positions that we need to, just to make sure we stay...
We'll certainly look at all the open positions.
And Scott, you've done a really good job of managing the money and keeping us above the fray. As I see what New York wants, $10 billion or something, it boggles my mind, but...
Thank you, sir. Staff does a really good job.
Well, I'd like to add to that. When I came on to commission, we had 1270 or 1280 employees or something like that, if I'm correct, hovering right at 13. So we hadn't added a whole lot of staff in five years that I've been here.
We're very fortunate. When you hire really good people, you don't have to have a lot of extra people that are picking up the slack. A lot of governments do that. They just have positions. They fill the position. And somebody there that don't have a whole lot to do, and that's not the way this government operates.
Right.
One of the statistics that I know we're real proud of is the employee to citizen ratio. Our benchmark counties, you know, we're certainly ahead of them.
Yeah, right. We're about, we're 1 to 111 or something like that now, maybe a little bit lower, 1 to 107. The one employee for every over 100 employees, I'm sorry, every 100 citizens is a real good ratio when you compare it to our benchmark counties. Some of them are 1 in 60 or 1 in 70.
Also in that, when people are looking at it, they need to look, some of those incorporated and have a lot of employees on the city side also, so it's...
That's correct. That's right.
There is. And thank you so much to our employees that carry the weight to make that happen, yeah. Anything else in that section?
That's all. The year-to-date budget report, Ms. Reese will give you that if you have any questions about that.
Do I have any questions on that one?
No, I do not.
One, Sploesd update, I believe is the next one?
Yes. My normal three reports are in your books for your review. I will highlight the Sploesd update. We received funding through the month of March and that check was over $2 million. And we still had a rate of 8.9% increase. So, you know, April may be a little different when we get the funding for that. But actually, have we gotten April yet? We have not gotten April yet. So that may be, you know, a decrease there, but so far we're holding...
I drive by Lowe's parking lot. It looks like we're...
I did a lot of online shopping while I was quarantined, so.
Hopefully they're paying the tax.
That's right. That's right.
Another real, when you talk about comparison, I believe I shared this with the commission, but one of our bankers did a comparison of all the AAA's in Georgia. And Columbia County was up 7.9% at the time of that comparison. There was one or two other AAA's that were up just a little bit, but most of them were down. So Cobb, Gwinnett, some of the big counties that are AAA-funded counties, or AAA-rated counties, rather, their sales tax collections are in the negative. And yet we're up 7.9% by that and 8.91 by this. And if we take a hit in sales tax, the way we budget, we're going to be okay.
With that, AAA part, that we're the only county outside of metro Atlanta that is AAA?
Right. And we're one of few counties in the entire country that has a AAA across the board. Some of the other counties that are AAA in Georgia only have a AAA from one radio agency, not all three.
Makes you proud to be part of that team. Investment report. Do I have any questions on that?
No questions. See where our money is.
Having no questions on that? Is there any commissioner or public comment? Patient, Commissioner Allen, you with us? You got any comments? Good.
You awake?
Covering all the... Awesome with the AAA boundary.
That's right. Good. I don't have anything for executive session, seeing no other items we need to cover. This meeting is adjourned. Can we come back in five minutes? Time you want to come?
Let's say 8:55.
8:55. Thank you.
Thank you. Too late.
Order of the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee meeting for May the 12th. Patient and pledge. We do have a quorum. All over.
Move.
Second.
All right. Nothing on the consent agenda, presentations. We'll move right into the debate. Clayton, I believe. Yes, sir.
Good to see you, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you. Not badly. Are you picking up?
We can hear you.
How about that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, somebody. Off of Canterbury Lane. I recommend... I would recommend that...
So our investment would be 30, is that correct? Somewhere in there.
Motion to consent?
Second.
I'm moved. Thank you for working with that group, Mr.... Yes, sir. Over there in district. I know that, but when people, like you say, when, I know we've met with a group before and they thought it was a great idea to have county water, but they didn't think it was a great idea for any participation. So I see what you're saying with these people wanting to test and... Item, sir.
Third. 95 cents.
Mr. Clayton, oh, may I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
The other two bids are well over $300,000 and Blair was half of that. What did they leave out?
I've talked to Beams. They have more work than they can cover right now. They're throwing high numbers because they can't get to it.
So are we having problems getting people to bid? When the economy is hot, I know everybody gets busy and you can't get people to bid on stuff. At least you have three bidders, but are they busy or they can't find people to work? And the prices are still reasonable? Good.
Yeah, I was wondering how the virus and all this economic shutdown has affected that industry. Because I know it was...
We're starting to have people knock on Stevens' door looking for work from the building industry. Maybe not the site guys, the utility guys, but probably they're starting to get a lot of calls asking if we have any work that we can put out for them.
It's gonna be interesting to see the new normal, which is a term I hear everywhere, as people adjust their work and realize they can do more from home. How that's going to affect the commercial industry.
But this was under budget, so... But this was under budget, so...
Second.
Oh, well, move, move to consent.
Oh, okay.
Before he seconds, or what?
So moved, thank you, sir.
On April twenty-third. And improvement. Hello, big one. All. All of us. Five.
We know this group. I haven't, I haven't seen that name.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Same day. Our... Our water. Or W construction.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, sir.
Have a proposal here for L Engineering. A button two. Uh, as far.
We gave authorization to Blue Water to do something similar.
So in terms of the person who left, so we had salary budget of that position, how much do we have budgeted for this? Because this is a different move, and they're billing us by the hour, is it?
Yeah, and of course, I'm using some. I budgeted.
And so if we replace the person, then we'll stop using Dell?
Hold on.
This is, this is just to set the rates. There's no minimum amount of hours we have to use. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Ever. Air construction. Last storm. Lot of mud running down the driveway. All about. All important things.
I'm assuming homeowner is...
And so we'll just eat that six thousand dollars, or will you be going after the contractor engineer?
No offense, Chris.
No offense?
No offense.
If I had to go to court, I'd fight there on my right hand side, brother.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Takes a couple of hours or just...
Does this have anything to do?
Has everything to do with it.
So this will get that situation?
That, the situation, we met on calls since.
Can you explain it?
So we have a privately owned pond.
Yes.
That had a failing outfall structure. That outfall structure failed to engage the overflow structure. The overflow structure basically became the primary outfall structure. Not designed to do that. Over time, it washed away, and it finally washed to a point where it exposed our sewer line. Now we have to relocate our sewer line because of that.
And a bypass running. And the man.
Might need Chris on this one. Well, I think Chris was in the same meeting that I'm speaking. But there were some issues with Mr. Passmore's house and where it could, I mean...
It was right beside Mr. Passmore's house, and I believe...
Still his pond caused it.
I think.
He owns a portion of it.
About ten, ten property owners.
We, we brought all property owners in and had a good discussion about it, and they think the county should fix their pond. We think they should fix their own pond. Kind of a stalemate. Another big rain came and caused more damage and exposed the sewer line, washed it away.
They addressed the problem, or going to, or are we going to have to? At creating, say that was creating kind of a, a problem with the storm system downstream or whatever, because that was not holding the amount of water. Am I, am I incorrect on that?
Right, right. So the outfall structure is designed to pass a certain amount of water through it.
Right.
Once that, I, I don't know what that storm, what that system was designed for, maybe a fifty-year storm. As long as it's less than a fifty-year storm, that outfall structure discharges a certain amount of water. Once you exceed that capacity, the overflow engages. Basically done away with that initial retention. Now the overflow's engaged all the time. So any storm that hits that pond goes right through it. There's no retention value left in the pond. Does flow down through undeveloped land and eventually hits...
Kelly Creek?
And then it hits the creek, and that creek ends up out towards river.
There's no recourse for the county in a situation like that? That's really, I guess that's a question. Is there any recourse?
It's not, it's not affecting public infrastructure until it destroyed the sewer line, so I think that's, that's a question for Chris, but... It doesn't affect a road downstream. It's not jeopardizing a house downstream that we're aware of.
I'd be able to.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Other one here.
Ice.
Move to consent.
So moved.
Motion to consent.
Second.
Moved. Can we get back to spending money?
Arch to fit. Fact. Operating.
Do not have this machine at this time.
Why do we need it?
It rotate more. I'm working on Joe House. That's what this machine.
Are we doing without it now? Are we renting one, or what, what is? Well, I know we've been able to do a lot. We, we buy a lot, buy a lot, we do. But we've been able to do a lot of projects, and I think you've saved a lot of money by being able to do that. We're spending money, but I think in the long haul, over the period of time, it...
I see this is coming from Canada. Are there any, is there a downside from that? How long will it take for it to be delivered? Are there any special taxes or tariffs we have to pay? So getting it serviced is not an issue?
I was going to ask Nick. He's gone, I guess, but, but I have a, one car wash that I bought equipment that come out of Canada. It is a nightmare when I need parts. You just, you just can't get them. Uh, and hung up in custom and all of this stuff, so... Ten thousand dollars, I don't...
Sir?
I, I know we, I know we always, always go with the low bidder. We're going to create problems down the road. It's going to cost us more money.
Mr. Chairman. Mark, I'm hearing you say not only was it the lower bid, it's also a preferable piece of... I do have reservations about the, the Canada thing. Like you, I've experienced a little bit of that, and with times like they are, getting things, getting parts, it's...
I don't know the...
No hesitation at all, huh?
Oh, Lord.
Oh, taking that into consideration, I...
I cautiously second.
So moved.
Good to see you again, Mr. Clayton.
Uh, who's, who's on Hensel's thing?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to take these, these first round. Mr. Titus is his first committee meeting, and these are items that I was working on with staff prior to his arrival, so... Thought I might take these, and then the next one is on him, so...
This one I wanted to ask him a few.
He is still here to be asked questions.
Trying to break him in good.
We're going to ask all the questions you want. First item we have for you is a development agreement. Um, this, this item here goes along with the next item as well, so it's a two-part agreement. As you know, we're extending Gateway Boulevard out to Wrightsboro Road. We're having to put turn lanes on Wrightsboro Road. Well, corner parcel at the intersection of our new Gateway Boulevard and Wrightsboro Road is currently in, um, plan, uh, planning department for a rezoning request to put a gas station there. Uh, we feel it's a good fit for the zoning. However, you still have to take your vote as a commission. If the commission votes for the rezoning, they will be required to put some turn lanes in on Wrightsboro Road. Their project will overlap our brand-new turn lanes. Instead of them building turn lanes on top of what we just built, we got together and figured out what it would take for us to do it at one time. We actually figured up a good plan that not only gets Wrightsboro, the, I'm sorry, Gateway Boulevard its turn lanes. It also gets the new convenience center, uh, convenience store, gas station, their turn lanes, but also gets Brigadier subdivision, a left turn lane. So it's a, it's a really good design. It solves three problems with one project. Uh, we did ask Gary what it would cost to do this work, and they came back with a cost of one hundred fifty-three thousand dollars, um, and some change. So we feel that the developer of the gas station, we responsible for eighty percent of that. We'd be responsible for twenty percent. The developer of the gas station agrees. So this is a developer agreement. Well, he will write us a check in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. That check will be payable to the county. We will then, um, the next time will be a change order to Gary to actually perform the work if he chooses. Driver has been through this agreement. I believe he's satisfied with everything it says. Steve's or anything I left out, brought up. So we think it's a really good solve for everybody. We get the turn lanes in. If, um, gas station gets voted down, I'm sure we'll be back to changing this agreement. But, um, it also, it's, it's three votes that make this happen, basically. This is the first of those agreements. So staff has recommended approval of this agreement. But, um, it also, it's, it's three votes that make this happen, basically. This is the first of those agreements. So staff has recommended approval of this agreement.
That is the driveway closest to the red light out there. That was one of my questions, was that a, it says full access driveway, but I was thinking right in, right out. That's the one on Wrightsboro Road. My other question, are the two driveways off of Gateway Boulevard, are they full access? Are there going to be turn lanes or the ability to get across? We're not creating a, a thoroughfare through there, and now having people turn, being stopped and backing up the traffic trying to get in the gas station because there's a. So are there turn lanes off of Gateway? On Gateway? They have two driveways off of Gateway, so both of those would have left turns or not necessarily. Or is that gonna be right in, right out? Okay? Well, I, I just want, I, I, I'm trying to make sure that we, we don't have issues there. We have, we, we spending a lot of money on a road from Wrightsboro to, to, in. Rising South or whatever, and then we don't need to be locking it down with a lot of turning, with people having to stop and all that. And I, you know, uh, I'm a big, big fan of, of, of left turns to keep the, the traffic moving, so. Make sure we don't create, I know y'all not gonna let.
So in our packet, it says that, um, the split is eighty percent developer, twenty percent county, but if they don't get the zoning, then I assume the developer would back out, and who's gonna pay that eighty percent? There is not the owner on the hook for eighty percent, it's the developer. Is that what you're telling me?
That's the owner. The owner of the property, he's the one that's gonna benefit. If the, the developer goes away, a new developer will come in, so the owner's. He builds the turn lanes, he's got a more valuable piece of property because the work's already done.
Has that property already been zoned? Was, there was a zoning right in that area?
Wasn't this one, right down the street, there was one for Cousins Property, I forget the name of it, right down the street. It wasn't this one. Cousins or something like that. Forget their name. But it wasn't this one.
Okay.
That doesn't happen, we still gonna do the left-hand turn into. That needs, same thing that I was just talking about. Wrightsboro Road backs up and. Have to traffic out there.
I think the way it's, it's written with the being the owner, I think it's gonna happen no matter what zoning happens. If the whole thing happens, the left turn for Brigadier goes in. If it doesn't happen, then left turn for Brigadier doesn't go in.
Yeah, a lot of times we get accused of putting construction, or putting, uh, zoning, or putting businesses above infrastructure. This is one time where we're doing the infrastructure first, anticipating what's gonna go there at some point. We, nobody, nobody is putting the commission on the hook. We know you'll zone that, or you may not zone that, but this is an example of us putting the infrastructure in first.
I, I don't have a problem with doing it, as long as we meet those couple of ideas.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna keep the traffic flowing and not create another issue out there, and then we just.
I agree.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move.
Thank you. Next one I have for you is a change order for Gateway Boulevard in the amount of a hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and five cents to cover the cost of the stuff we just discussed.
Move to consent.
So move.
Next I have for you is a.
Great question before you go there, so where do we stand on the gateway?
I think June, we should have it pretty close to being done in June. Yeah, that rain really whopped us back in the wintertime. They had it pretty close to graded out, and the rain hit us, washed a lot of stuff away. They had to go back in and do a lot of regrading and a doozy. That rain knocked us back about six months.
That going to be on their dime, or are we going?
So, so far, everything's on them. I don't, they. Next one I have for you here is East Wing Gate Storm Drain Extension. Um, this is six hundred and thirty-four linear feet of ditch that we're gonna change to a pipe system. Uh, we'll be doing this with our in-house staff. Put out bids for the material. We received free, here costs is fifty-eight thousand, ninety-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Staff's recommend approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
Next one I have for you is an encroachment permit, I mean, excuse me, encroachment easement. Encroachment agreement for eight thirteen. I don't know how to say that word in Ashaw Court. Listen, the homeowners looking to put a pool in, and we do have that ten-foot drainage utility easement in the rear of the property. We do not have any infrastructure, so it does not impact the county. So staff's recommend approval of the encroachment agreement.
Move to consent.
And they understand if we ever want to do something back there, that it's too bad for their pool.
It's in the agreement, the agreement is attached with their build-out, so they're very aware.
Thank you. Second.
So move.
Next I have for you is acceptance of some deed improvements and a release of bond from the Murray Brothers Land Development. During the construction of Longhorn, some water and sewer lines were built. They look to deem them to us to be county water and sewer lines for future connectivity to adjacent properties. Staff has recommended acceptance of the improvements from Murray Brothers Land Development. Their easement plaque continues upon staff's approval of the final plaque as built and the warranty deed, with the one-year warranty period beginning the day the deed.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move.
Next one I have for you is a lighting agreement with the GDOT for the Lewiston Road project, lighting project. Uh, this is an agreement with GDOT that says that we're going to, um, provide the installation of, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, operation, repair, and maintenance of the lighting system next fifty years on this project. If you do agree to this, the next item will be what it will cost us to do that. Uh, but it's a eighteen hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents a month for Georgia Power to install and maintain these lights. This is just the agreement with GDOT that says we're gonna do that. We're gonna put lights, and we have to sign this agreement.
Second.
Now we have the Georgia Power lighting cost for Lewiston Road. Um, approved the agreement to maintain. Now here's the proposal from Georgia Power. The upfront installation cost is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. This included in our TIA budget, so we will be reimbursed for this money. The monthly rate is eighteen hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Covers all operation and maintenance of the wires, the poles, and the fixtures. Staff has recommended that we authorize the chairman to execute this agreement with Georgia Power.
Move to consent.
Second, would I wish I had a monopoly like that?
Next item I have for you is a traffic control video wall additional funds. Uh, we had a budget amount of three hundred thousand dollars to replace our existing video wall and traffic. Uh, we originally paid two eighty-one, seven twenty-six, fifty-two. Uh, we do need an additional module, um, to bring in some additional inputs into our video wall to allow us to bring, uh, all of the items we use, uh, our rhythm, our glance, our max time, everything we use to control traffic out there. The cost to bring those upgrades is sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Staff has recommend approval, this is under our original budget.
Move to consent.
Second.
So move.
These next two items, I'm gonna ask Mr. Prather, uh, our friends from Craig Golden Davis to come up and talk to us about our Performing Arts Center. They know this a lot better than I do, so.
Know the most complicated.
Uh, Stephen Prather, Splosh Construction.
John Hanson, Craig Golden Davis, architect. So, um, first change order number nine, uh, Columbia County Performing Arts Center is comprised of nine COP items. These items have, um, are, uh, in and out of engineers' hands and contractors embedded for months. Some of them since twenty eighteen, excuse me, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. For COP fifty-two, additional framing for balcony bleachers. This is in the first and second balcony and the corners. Additional, um, engineering and metal studs for the risers of these areas, just before the slabs and the balconies were poured. We did additional metal studs and steel.
Why?
On, on drawings is what it says, is.
Who, who did the drawings?
Um, this is.
I'm the architect. Um, oh, it's, an architect has a number of engineers that serve on our team to help us design the facility. One of those is a structural engineer who's responsible for anything related to the structural design of the, uh, of, of the building. So in this case, um, the studs that were required to support these areas that are very complex in geometry were not included in the design. Added for the design.
These, this is.
Why weren't they included?
This is one of the change orders that we've been working on for months, and Branson has made a number of site visits. Um, it was just a vague area in the design.
It was an omission. Um, no one likes omissions, we don't like omissions.
I don't like paying for omissions.
So, um, they do happen. It's not an uncommon thing in construction. It's something that happens. And, um, we did our due diligence to correct the matter so the building could be constructed as it needs to be.
And this, this is additional work that was not in the permit and bid documents, so we didn't, we didn't pay for it, meaning this was all not in the documents. So the additional time of the twenty-eight days, the engineering bills, labor of these guys coming up and down lifts at this stage because there was no balcony poured. Um, so it was very labor-intensive.
And I, I don't question the, the need of any of the items. I question why they weren't built into the process when we put this out for bid.
That seemed like a very important part, talking about the safety and all of that to be.
We don't want it to fall down, granted.
We don't want it to fall out, but to, to leave it out, if it's very important. That's, that's what we're saying. Can't be built without it, but it got left out is kinda tough.
It did get left out, and, and while I was not on the commission at the time, I do remember seeing those documents before the bid happened. And, um, there were some things that were a little incomplete, and we, we, as a county, were in a hurry to get the bid out and get it done and get it on the books and get it started. And I believe there were some folks who knew that there were some gray areas, and, um, these change orders do not surprise me, having seen the, the drawings beforehand.
Flexity and the timeline that these documents were put together.
It is unfortunate, though, that, because we were in a rush, now we are paying for the lifts that are not still there and the seven and a half percent, um, markup, you know, uh, overhead profit for the contractor, which is, you know, is customary, um, to, to get paid for those change orders, but also, um, it makes us look incompetent because we keep adding days to something we promised months ago. We, and now we're telling the citizens again, oh, we're gonna push it out a little further, a little further, a little further. And it's a little embarrassing for us, but we were in a hurry, and I, I use the term "we" loosely, um, but we were in a hurry, and now we're paying the price for that. So while I would love to be able to say, no, we don't need change orders to pay this, I believe these are reasonable, given the circumstances.
The contractor, and you get a set of plans, looked at these plans at some point in time. Who did this? That, that, I think that's the question that we're, Cameron and I, we're both asking. The point is, know we need it, we got to have it, not a question of that, but somebody should.
Sometimes when. Well, sometimes when an owner, the county in this, this circumstance is in a hurry, they ask to move forward and we will, we'll deal with it later. We'll, you know, we'll sort it out later. And I'm not saying that that's what happened in this circumstance, but the contractors who, who saw this before the bid, um, several of them recognized the gray areas.
Were we under that kind of gun, too?
Absolutely. We, we put a, a tight finish date on them and pushed them hard. It's on the street to get bid. I think going into it, we knew there was gonna be certain things we had to adjust on the fly. With, with any construction project, there's something to adjust on the fly. And I think with this one, though, I think there was some discrepancy in who actually was doing the design. There was some notes, I believe, on this one that said this, the steel or the metal stud guy was supposed to come up with his own design in the notes. Little stud guy didn't catch that, or McKnight didn't catch that, or McKnight said, that's not my responsibility. I, there was a little ambiguity here, but changes happen, and, and some of these changes are stuff that we direct them to do because we saw that we wanted it better. Put a bid out, happy with the bid, then we realized that we do these minor changes, we can have a much better product, and let's do it now versus doing it later. Um, it's gonna save us maintenance in the long run, it's gonna save us with, with issues with fixtures not working properly in the long run. It's gonna save us with countertops that don't look good over time. Um, I think it's as we go through this, this construction project, we find things that we can make better, and then that's what we're doing.
I think a lot of these are things, like he's talking about, the countertops and items that we've decided on the fly that are, that are reasonable, um, but.
I don't question that.
Remember, you only had one, one bidder on this. Uh, you, we only had one bidder on this, and, you know, we decided to go forward with that one, one contractor's price.
I'm all for doing the best you can do at a time, but, but a safety issue, my concern, the other safety issue, it, oh, I'm not a contractor.
We got, I don't, I don't believe there are any other safety issues out there. Uh, John goes with that building quite often. We have building standards that are through it constantly. We've got Stephen and his staff that are through it constantly. I don't.
I, I'm not, I'm not doubting that, but again, a safety issue should not have been dropped, I don't think.
I don't think this is a true safety issue. I think this was a, a cosmetic. How do we make this thing look the way we want it to look during?
I thought I heard safety.
I, I used the wrong term there, and I, I apologize. It's not that it's safety-related, sorry. Um, it's, it's, it's integrity of the building to structure. To be able to frame it to construct it, it needed this. Without it, it wouldn't be able to be constructed. I'm sorry for using the word.
Work's been done, obviously, and spent months vetting this, fighting with the contractor on his labor hours, his numbers, his material. Um, we think it's a fair price for the work that's already been done. Second.
One thing for consideration, I'm sorry.
Please.
Just one thing for consideration, as we go through this project, and we did know there were gonna be some changes, uh, but we, we set some very firm guidelines in the beginning on the general contractor. Um, I met with the owner, and I've also met with the, with the superintendent of the job. We put some pretty stick, uh, pretty stiff, uh, guidelines on our architect. They've done a lot of projects for us, uh, some of our bigger projects, uh, but we did do those, knowing that these things were gonna, were gonna happen. But the one thing that I wanna assure the committee of is that, uh, Mr. Prather does his best to get these things as low as he can because he don't wanna go tell Matt. And then when he goes tell, after he tells Matt, then they don't, they both don't wanna come in there and tell me because then I ask, we spend about thirty minutes doing the same thing that you're doing. So, um, I, I can assure you, just based on, on how this has been, neither one of those gentlemen are very comfortable where they're standing. And, and this isn't something that's frivolous, uh, at all. I mean, it's something that, it's been vetted and, and, um, because if, if it wasn't, Mr. Schlauchter would have sent it back to him and said, forget it. I would have sent it back to him and said, forget it, too. And, and you're right, Mr. Rich, or Vice Chair Richardson, um, it's, uh, some of these things shouldn't have been dropped, and we'll have to consider that in the future when we, you know, deal with some of these companies.
Consent.
Second.
So move.
Would you like me to go through the rest of the proposals and that?
No.
I, I, I think we're, I think we're good with all of them.
Move on to number ten.
The days, I mean, and I know you beat them down, I saw where you xed them out and all of that. It is what it is. It's just 60 more, 60 more days. You know, everybody's looking forward to getting the building open. That's the whole thing in a nutshell. I surely know Mr. Commissioner Allen would like to see something before he is no longer with us and his time is drawing to an end. Go to, doing better things, so. That's what we're shooting for. We're not, we all have the same common goal.
And since we've...
Next one's gonna address that timeline.
Since we, yeah, since we've approved these, basically, it still has to go to the commission, should we expect any more change orders?
I believe so, yes. These items that we've been working through are, like I said, from the beginning of the project with the soils and whatnot, and some other items last year. We've been, these things take some time to vet, and so we are currently working on some other items now that will most likely result in a change order.
Money or days?
Right now, just money. We can assure y'all that we're spending the time going through these items and checking that this project needs.
I'm not inclined to vote for any more change orders financially, so just keep that in mind when we have this discussion again.
Up next, I have change order 10, and this is just for weather delays. This stems from July 2019 until February 2020. The contract allows a certain amount of days every month. These are additional days on top of that that we've awarded the contractor for delay in his critical path. As in, you can see in your backup, that we've xed out quite a number of days that we felt that he did not deserve, and the contractors agreed to that. So these two change orders will add a number of days to the contract with the new substantial completion date of October 18th, 2020.
You've gone back into the previous change orders that addressed the time and the weather, and none of these overlap?
Yeah.
Because we've done some for weather...
Right.
Previous.
Right.
I think we're still close to on schedule.
Why?
July was January. Be able to do something, we're still on that, right?
The last schedule that we've seen from the contractor is very close to this date.
I think last time you brought a change order for time to us, it had several months worth on there, and we had requested that you not sandbag them and wait.
Right. That's why we're doing these, we're trying to keep on top of those.
Would these go back to...
July.
So could we have done this, you know, a little bit? I know you don't want, it's uncomfortable to stand here every month and go, hey, couple more days, couple more days.
Well, I think we're out of the rainy season and well as the building's dried in now, so we've kinda reached a point to February where we feel like we should not have any more weather delays in the project. Brought them to you in a lump sum. Change order nine.
But personally, if I get a personal opinion, would prefer to see them a little each month, or at least every other month, because when you save them up, it's painful to see that big number.
We'll do that.
Thanks.
While we're talking about, I know about no change order, future money, but...
I didn't say that. I said I was not inclined to vote for it.
Just keep in mind, there's things that we left out of this bid intentionally, so we'll be bringing actually new bid numbers to you for lighting.
Orchestra pit.
Orchestra, orchestra shell.
There's some items that we wanna go back and add now to make the building better, and we found the money.
But you have allowances for those already in the contract.
Some of those...
This is a whole new...
Some of those are all, some of those are new.
We didn't want the lighting, for instance, we didn't wanna bid the lighting out two years ago and have outdated lighting. Lighting changes so fast.
Right.
So why bid it to?
Houses for lighting in the contract.
House lighting.
Right.
But not performance lighting. We're talking the performance lighting to light the stage.
That'll be a whole addition.
Correct.
That orchestra shell is gonna be an expensive addition, but it's one that we think is necessary for the integrity of the building.
That's us changing, though.
Correct.
As opposed to we left something out.
That's correct.
Courtyard outside of a eating area, that's gonna be something we bring back to you. Little things like that are gonna come back to you.
Jen took consent.
Second.
So move.
Thank y'all.
Beat.
Are there any legal items? Staff reports, Mr. Clayton.
What about collections? Are we having any issues? Because we had, we'd put that off.
We did announce that, I believe at the last Facebook Live, that there was somewhat of a moratorium. I don't think it was an official moratorium, but it was a moratorium on the water cutoff at the suggestion of the commission through the coronavirus pandemic, and we extended that to May the 15th. But after May the 15th, we're gonna start working with these folks to make sure that they get their bills caught up, so they don't get too far in the rears.
Any questions on the construction projects?
No, sir.
Missioners or public comment? I think the only public we have today is Major Willis. Right? Welcome, sir. For executive session items, so I will adjourn at 47.
Thank you.